Good morning. We are going to call the morning work session of the Clickittack County Board of County Commissioners to Order. We are going to begin with our Public Works Director, County Engineer.
Morning.
Morning.
Let's see, we have the one item on the consent agenda is our request for vacation carryover that Jeff talked about a week or so ago. And then we have one pay estimate for Kirby Nagelhaus Construction. This is the last final payment for the remaining building contract costs. Construction program on the roadside, Courtney Road really is the only active project. Actually have a pay estimate for Courtney Road that's going to be going out pretty soon as well, but they're shut down now for the winter with paving and striping are the only things left to do next spring.
How's the road?
Pretty good. Yeah. Everything's kind of froze up now, so that's good.
Hope you got it graded before it froze up.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they're doing a good job taking care of it. And then our guys are plowing snow, so. Design side, Rock Creek Bridge Painting Project. We have plans and specs for review. Sundale Road, Old Eight. It's a reconstruction and VST surface. That's a RAP project. They're funded by grant funds. Designers are laying out the alignments and we'll move toward getting a better estimate for that project once that's done. Then we have our federal safety projects, which are guardrails, slow flattening, white edge lines, signs and guideposts. So those are all federally funded projects that will go out next spring as well. Maintenance side, the guys are pretty much reacting to winter weather. On the west side, they're also doing some hand brushing and trying to widen things after the last snowfall. And everything's pretty much froze up. And this week, we're just going to be dealing with icy conditions more than not. Hopefully, we get some sun to kind of thawed out and get it off the roadway surface. Facility side, the new building, we still have some remaining work on our sidewalks and curb and gutter in our parking lots. We have punch list items. I think our contractor's finally getting us an estimate for the final HVAC changes that need to be made. And let's see. And then they should be finishing up. They had to schedule to finish up their punch list by the end of the year. So hopefully, that'll, that'll take place as well. Pioneer Center, those HVAC units are done. HVAC units on the courthouse will be here till December. That means a spring installation at some point, which will be scheduled next year.
Where will we put that?
The contractor will keep.
Yeah, contractor keeps.
Yeah, until they're ready to be installed. Still kind of working through the process, the archaeological piece on the fairgrounds water line with construction next spring. Radio sites, I'll let you talk.
Radio sites, let's talk the bid because that's where we were. So we looked at their bid, and they have some mathematical errors, so, in our favor. So it actually came in at 496 versus the 533. So it's a little, it's less by about $35,000.
I will say that disturbs me a little bit that they made a mathematical error in their bid documents.
Yeah, it happens. We talked to them and said, you know, look, we need, we need to know if you guys are okay with this and where you can't, you know. And they are, and they're fine. We actually asked them, you know, we can't get into comparing prices. We did ask on a few things. The thing I was happy about was the fact that the tower is a very good price. It's 137,000. We had it, our estimate's 185. The big difference, though, where their estimate went way up is concrete. And that's what we've seen for everything. We saw it out here, you know, on our, on our ramps and everything else. This is concrete that you got to bring way up there. And it's about 400 yards. Yeah, it's $135,000 for 400 yards. That was, that's the big price. Problem is, though, looking around and talking to...
Is it, is it like the footing to anchor the tower?
Yeah, it's the footing. So it's not finished, concrete.
It's not finished, it's just poured in a hole.
Exactly. And this is the price we got.
With steel.
With steel. You know, you have steel in it, so.
$37 a yard?
Yes, it's crazy. The problem is, though, I don't know you're going to get anything better. Because there, that's a concrete sub. That's, they don't do, you know, tower erectors don't do their own concrete work. And the good thing, what's that? We got one bid. It's Day Wireless, who is also the contractor. That's very familiar with our system. I talked it over with the team on Thursday. We met with the consultant, with Jeff King, with everybody. And I said, you know, I'm on the fence on this one. And I was looking for, you know, advice from them. And of course, ultimately, I came to the conclusion, I would recommend taking the bid. I know it's 71,000 over our estimate, but my fear is, talking to the other two bigger competitors, they don't have capacity to do it in '23. They won't bid. So that leaves us with one small guy and Day Wireless, pretty much. That's what's going, that's the going on thing. And I don't know that, you know, he's going to bid any differently. And I don't see Day Wireless as bid. I'm afraid they'll go up with the tower, not down. And, you know, with the concrete prices, like I said, that's what killed us out here on this project, was concrete. And that's what we're seeing everywhere. Those were the big difference. I mean, everything else, the grounding, you know, we were right there, same prices. Outside of the stupid ice bridge, which I'm not really sure, and I can't get into that conversation with the contractor, you know, an ice bridge is just a piece of metal. You hang up on the thing to keep your cables from getting iced over. We had it for 4,000. They thought it was worth 20 grand. We would like to go into the businesses building our own for that kind of money. There's good profit in that. But they, they do hide money in places like that thing, too. But like I said, the big thing was concrete, because that shouldn't have been over $60,000 to do that. Normal prices, but we're not seeing them. Concrete prices are terrible everywhere.
Yeah, and I think finding people that do concrete, that want to come work on your job, has been the challenge. I know the cities struggled with that here in Goldendale on their fire street project. And I know we did out here. The bids were exceptionally high. And I, I don't know that that's changed, the, those subs are able to...
Is anybody making concrete in Goldendale now?
What's that?
Is anybody making concrete in Goldendale right now?
I don't know if they're still batching when you set something up or not, or whether we just haul it up from Dalsport or...
Yeah. But it's the guys actually doing the work, I think, is the big thing. Because when we reached out to, just to get the, the people with you, they were like, we don't have capacity, can't do it. So, and again, I got to, but they, their, their contracts, their concrete sub is from Spokane.
Wow. Yeah, so they're going to come bring their folks, and they're going to, so you're paying for, have them come here, pretty, um, they're putting them up, they're staying, they're tying some steel, and then they're pouring a big hole full of concrete.
That's kind of the problem when there's not enough people to get a competitive bid. But also, in the same regard, if you hold it over to the following year where you might get a competitive bid, then you have inflation on that. So I don't think you're going to save anything. So.
Okay.
It's, it's high, but, you know.
I mean, at least it's not, you know, 40% over engineer's estimate.
Right.
No. No. I wish I could advise better, but I don't know taking...
We should all get a, put our handprints in it or something for that cost.
Yeah, they'll probably let us do that.
If you're willing to help out for a day.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll hand me a trowel.
Makes me want to just look at the specs, just for my own interest, as far as, good Lord. Those are generally, that's not a, that's not a high skill project, as far as you're, you're pouring concrete in the hole.
Yes.
There's no special finish on that.
There's no special finish. Yeah, it's foundation. It's a big brick.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, moving on.
Okay. All right. I just have the reminder of the FEMA flood map update on the 14th this week. And then just good news for, for the year. Good way to finish up. So in 2022, the Public Works Department, with really Jeff applying for all of these, received and Seth and others that helped get information, 3,275,000 in bridge funds for repair and rehab of some of our structures and throughout the county. And then our Surface Transportation Program, this is where we, we were good at delivering our previous SDP projects, and we were awarded the most money, extra money in the state because of that, doing what we said we were going to do. And so that's another $2,830,000 that we'll put out as a project. And then Rural Arterial Preservation Program, these are dollars, they're RAP funds that come through CRAB, and it's competitive, highly competitive. And, and we've kind of figured this out, how to, how to work this. But we, we receive money for paving. The two big projects are paving, which is Sunnyside Road, and then bridge funds to rebuild a bridge, Schrotz Road Bridge in the east side of the county, which needs to be done. And that's for a total of $4,086,000 new dollars, for a total of $10,191,000 for just this year. So that's, that's pretty good for a year. In addition to that, Jeff's also helped the cities of Benjen and White Salmon to obtain almost another half a million dollars for their pavement and surface rehabilitation projects in those two cities.
Yeah, which we'll do the work for. I give them the estimates, put it all together for them, and then they submit it to TIB.
Yeah. And then I don't have on here, but the, it looks like you guys received a letter about the Superior Court remodel dollars, too.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
So we're working on those. So that's about a half a million more.
That was 600,000. 685 up.
Yeah, so that gets added on to this total as well.
When we do work for the cities, like this paving, does that count on our 10% use of our own employee labor?
Because it's maintenance work.
Yeah.
It would. You're right. You're right. If it was construction work, then it would. But we're not changing the surfaces or anything. We're just doing chip sealing and overlays.
That's why some, some, there's been some scrutiny over the years as to what is the definition of maintenance.
Yes.
How thick can the asphalt, new asphalt be?
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, that's good news for, to end the year.
Yeah, that is great. If I may, Mr. Chair, what's the, of that 10 point, nearly $2 million, what's the, what's the local match?
There's only the local match on the RAP dollars, and it's at 10%. So it's 400,000.
So be 400. So we leveraged, or you leveraged 400,000 of local dollars and got 10.2 million in grand dollars.
Yes.
That's, that's the, don't bury the lead. That's the, that's, that's a great return.
All right. And then we have the, the location for the animal shelter.
That was the other map, I guess. Sorry to give you a map.
So the sheriff approached us about where, do we have any county property that something like this could be located? So as part of that, you know, so you, it's for an animal shelter, the grant dollars that, that he received. And so I think a couple of locations were proposed, but there were more residential properties close by. So it probably didn't make a lot of sense to do that, because you'll, you'll open up other issues that you really don't intend to have.
Yes.
So at the fairgrounds, we've kind of acquired some small pieces of property over the years, over the past, I don't know, 10 years. And this one highlighted in red is one, it's a parcel that came along with that 40 acres that's west of the fairgrounds. This was in addition. And it kind of completes basically that we own the property, all of these, the two lots beside it, and then where the fairgrounds parking lot, main parking area is. So we've kind of acquired all that over the, the past few years since I've been here, through lots of different means, people just wanting to dispose of property and contacted us. And so we've got some pretty good deals. And then this one will complete that. So there's kind of a piece in between that's off at the edge of our property that really is close to the airport, which is more industrial use than Ty Ross has one of their facilities across the street, and then the fairgrounds. So it's pretty far away from most residential type.
Where's the 40 acre piece that you're talking about that we acquired?
It's, it's the block on the lower, there's 40 acres, I, it's to the left.
To the west of the fairgrounds.
Well, it's, yeah, I'm looking at the, online map, and it says that's 61.69. So they must have...
Forty of that will be, yeah, as soon as we close, which I'm just waiting for the sellers to sign, and then we can record the documents, and then it's...
And you're saying when that is, is this piece you're talking about and this other piece that's on kind of the west end of the, the Ty Ross Building, is that part of it? Or is that still going to be the same owner?
Yeah, the 40 acres is part of, it's, we own the big block next to the fairgrounds, and they kind of have this L-shaped piece around the outside that they saved, which gives them access to the airport ground and then down onto 142 as well. And then we own this piece connected to our property. That's the big piece. The red piece in red, it just goes with it because they don't need it. It's not...
Part of the same land deal, though?
Yeah, part of the same land deal. Yeah. So that seems like a good location, and it's current county property. I think they proposed, you know, their, where search and rescue and the...
Yeah.
Pots Lane. But there's a lot of residential use right there, and I don't think it'd be a great spot. This seems like an out of the way place, which would be better for that kind of use, if that makes sense to you guys.
Why would you choose this red one and not, you know, as part of the triangle there to the west?
Which triangle?
The parcel just to the west of that one.
That one, we were actually, we're trying to look at how we can site a new fuel island. And so we're, these might be locations for that. The one that's just to the west of the red square, you can kind of see there's a dark area. It's actually a drainage area that would be challenging to manage, but it's possible, just would be more expensive to deal with the site conditions. This, the red is, it's, it's high ground. You don't have drainages running through it. So that's why we selected that one, because you can spend a lot of money on site, site improvements.
Right.
And both of these are really close to the city. We have a, there's water, sewer maybe, take a little more work to get in there, but it's, the manhole is right at the entrance, main entrance to the fairgrounds. So, and then there's power and phone, whatever you need there. So it's, it's close.
Are we leasing this ground here?
The triangle where the, triangle piece...
With all the equipment sitting on it?
That's ours. We own that outright. We purchased it six or seven years ago.
So is all that our equipment, then?
No, that was, Ty was using our, using it for a while. Yeah, when it was the other person's property.
Is that still on there, or is this an old, old photo?
No, it's an old photo.
Okay.
There's that GIS that's old again.
I was going to mention it, but you didn't, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the land hasn't changed.
No, no, the land has not changed.
I know when we care, we're a car's park. Yeah, yeah.
What I'm looking at about it.
I mean, we own all that property, so it can go kind of anywhere in that area.
Right.
That makes sense. But general location, that's what we're trying to show. Can't think of, do you have any other proposed locations?
No, we kind of, he proposed pots, and we steered him out this way because it just doesn't...
Does he have you working on actual build estimates to get water in there, to get sewer in there, to get electrical in there? That all part of his estimate of his build?
Yeah, yeah. We told him it's, the water and sewer is close here, so it's definitely more reasonable. And we haven't actually costed it all out, but it's, it would, it'd be more reasonable than doing pots lane. But yeah, there's a bunch of steps because it is, you know, he got it through the state. He still has to go through all the archaeological stuff.
Well, that's, well, that's mine, actually. That's yours? Yeah, okay. Just making sure.
We're looking at a more updated photo.
Oh, okay.
Google their thing.
Ah, is there an airplane there now?
Yes.
Yes, that's current.
Yes, that is current.
Yes.
Do we charge a lease on that airplane?
Uh, no.
Okay. I think that's a much better spot than anywhere in town and dealing with the barking dogs. And my original thought was, you know, on that 40 acres on the backside. But that looks more interesting because you'd have to go through all of your guys' stuff to get there. And then the only other way in there, it looks like that's a drainage area.
There's a lot of, there's several drainages across that.
I mean, you could always put the dog kennel, you know, on the backside of the trash heap. It'd be fun.
Is there any long-term plan for that 40 acre?
I think the, the Fair Board has talked about more camping out in that area, and...
That's a lot of camping. Hell, they can put a motocross track out there.
Yeah.
It fills up every year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I don't, that, that's the only thing I've heard of from them.
That, that's, yeah.
So far.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I've heard, too.
So shall we talk to the sheriff about pursuing this location, or, or have him keep looking?
You can, I'm, from my opinion, you can talk to him about it, but I still need to see the pro forma on this thing. Pinceling, it's not going to cost us.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Well, we'll put together an estimate now, if you guys are okay with that. I mean, we kind of help out a lot of other people.
Sure.
Because we have more of the expertise.
I would say if the sheriff is requesting your help, then, then help. But, yeah, if he's, you know, he may eventually present a package to the board that doesn't cost county dollars.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you thinking about, like, would you want to do it all at once, like the dirt work for this and the fuel island at the same time, or, you know, to save money? Or what are you thinking?
That's an, that's an option.
Kind of like a more holistic plan of what we're going to do with that property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When were you planning on doing this fuel island?
Soon.
The next decade?
We have to do it soon.
Yeah.
Next year, it has to, yeah, it has to happen.
Yes.
It might be, he, whether or not he's read, the sheriff's ready or not, that will be the question. But the fuel island has to be replaced.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Or we'll have other...
Yeah, we have other, other concerns.
Yeah.
Of other help.
That's it for our list.
All right. Any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Quinn, we have a little bit of time. If you'd like to come for... You don't have time, or you don't want to come?
I don't want to.
She doesn't like to, she doesn't want to.
I don't want to have this conversation.
Yeah.
But also, we...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume you saw my email that we have now seven days to find a health officer, or the state will step in. I do not know what that looks like. My understanding is that has not been done before. So in an effort to continue my trailblazing streak, we're going to see how that... So this proposal is just, I just want to make sure that you're fine to re-advertise the health officer at a rate of $150 per hour. We were paying a little less than that previously. So we're doing a minimum of $1,700 a month. This would bring it up to $2,250. $150 per hour is what I was suggested as a rate from the state Department of Health. This is for a minimum of 15 hours per month. And we did put the contract as a $30,000 per year maximum with the, just that, I like to have a little bit of wiggle room. I understand that doesn't exactly pencil out, but that just gives a little leeway if we had something that needed addressed but didn't need to do, and then not have to do a contract amendment, so.
Historically, how many hours are they putting in a month, non-COVID time?
Probably like eight to 10, I would say. Because they still, they're still required to go like to the health officer meetings that the state puts on, and the trainings and that sort of stuff, in addition to supporting our department, so.
Yeah, but some of them are double or triple a dibbent for that, too, if they're working for two or three different counties.
Correct. So I think, and I think it's pretty standard that there's a contract minimum. And part of that's being available 24/7.
So they put in eight to 10, and we're going to give them a minimum of 15?
Correct.
And your recommendation is to do it because they're available 24/7?
Correct.
Do health officers ever, like, if somebody's got to go on vacation sooner sometime, right? Do they ever back up each other, or the state maximize, or how does that work?
They have backed up each other in the past. We now have a regional health officer, and my understanding is the intent is part of that will be to help support when our health officer is potentially on vacation. In the past, we've had a health op, actually, I don't know that we've ever had to request coverage. I know when we had Dr. Spitters, he even on vacation responded to our calls. So, and so did Dr. Person. That's not something we've dealt with really here.
So if we advertise 150 an hour, 15 hours a month, are we going to be able to get this done in the next seven days?
We are not. I mean, I hope so, but realistically, no.
And have we had any conversations with the state about that?
Nope.
If the state takes it over, how much are they going to charge us?
I don't actually know. I have, I'm talking with them this afternoon.
It is our hope, like, I would assume that if, like, if we approve this and we're out advertising again, and we have reasonable prospects, that maybe they will back off a little bit.
I hope so.
Because I, I mean, it would make no sense if we, I mean, we're doing our due diligence. We're doing everything we can. What benefit it is to them to step in at the last minute when we're, hopefully, I mean, it's not last minute, but it is, you know, if part of their threat is to try to compel us to, you got to change things up because it's not working, then we're, we're heeding that and we're, we're doing it.
My, my sense is that we're about to be made an example of.
Well, they took our health officer.
Correct.
Yeah, so...
We are very much between a rock and a hard place.
Right.
And I don't have a clear vision of how to fix that in the short period of time we were given. But this is a good start. If we can advertise a set of, a rate that's consistent with wages throughout the state.
Throughout the state, then, yeah. Okay, I mean, yes. Because I, again, I don't think we have a choice. And then we'll see if it doesn't work. I mean, we have to have a health officer. I mean, we have to have a health officer.
We, we have to.
Right, there is no choice, it's not an option to be over.
Without a health officer.
Hence is why the state will intervene if we vote.
So I think we all just need to go back and get a little continued education to be able to be health officer slash concrete workers.
Yeah.
We could just be rolling in dough.
Yeah, might be a little more skill involved, but.
Probably not much.
I don't know, at this point, I'd just sign up for the concrete work.
Oh, I would definitely choose that over a health officer.
Are you a no?
I'm a yes, begrudgingly hating it, but it is what it is.
Yeah. There are some problems that money can't fix.
I don't, I don't know that.
I don't know that this is one of them.
I don't know that this is one of them, but at least it makes competitive.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I hope the state doesn't throw a temper tantrum and make an example because that's just going to make it even harder.
I.
The next one, I would think.
Me too.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Director Quinn. Next up, we have our department update from Human Resources, Administrative Services, and random other things.
I've been called many things, thank you. Other duties as a side.
Yeah.
So, good morning.
Good morning. Is it?
It is.
It's cold, it's cold.
Yes, it's good. So I'll start off with risk management. Just let you know that yesterday Elizabeth and Casey and I had an hour-long Zoom meeting with the entire claims team from the new county risk pool. And then we'll have a, we have a meeting set up or getting one set up with the membership group, so we're fully involved in. And though I'll be the primary contact, it's important that the whole staff is, knows how to do it so that we, the whole knowledge transfer thing and that we're trying to do in all of our departments, so, so they sit in with me though. I do have one complaint, I, I said Elizabeth and Casey look like movie stars on Zoom and I look like Nick Nolte after a three-day bender. But, uh, so we have to get a, have to get a better filter on that.
Is this your filter on yourself for risk management?
He was hanging out too much with me this morning.
Wow, yeah. Stop doing that.
Anyway, but it was a good meeting and, and we're excited about working with the new pool, I think they're, they're and they're excited about having us be part of their organization as well, so looking forward to that. It's important to them that, that they have a single point of contact and is risk manager and claims. You know, that's the role you've assigned me to do and, and Lee and I are working with trying to get the departments into the habit of, of going to one place to get things like certificates of insurance and those kind of things. So everybody's pretty good about it, but it's, it's something that's easier for them on their end to deal with. And the PA and I've talked about it too, so, so we're all trying to provide a unified front to, to the new insurance carrier. So I don't see any problem there. IT, Randy? So Randy and I just have a couple of things we want to talk about this morning, or I have a couple of things, he has a couple of other things. So the fleet, so I have met with Lee, she's given me a list, she's working with Jen on moving the vehicles out of the what do we call that?
The department's into the fleet.
The VRNR, moving all of those over and the funds. Right. Thank you. So we're working on that aspect of getting the vehicles into the fleet that'll be parked in this parking lot and one or two in White Salmon, the signs are already here, well, they'll put them up once we decide how many spots we want. It's my assumption based on previous conversations, we want the fleet parked right there. There's plenty of parking around the courthouse, employees should be parking other places anyway than in this main parking lot. So it'll either be five or seven spots that initially be marked for fleet vehicles. And in terms, and so that's because I keep getting to mix up between the fleet and fleet software, which is a much bigger. I haven't heard from Sharon yet if, if Senior Services is going to utilize the fleet, she was looking at the cost and is considering that. So we've put a number of vehicles into the non-departmental. Sheriff will be using it, other departments will be using it. So the question for IT was, can we schedule vehicles like we schedule rooms? And the answer is?
Yes. Good answer.
So they'll be working on that, and what we have to figure out is what to call them, are they going, are we going to number them? Are we going to put them in there? Are you, are you checking out the Chevy Traverse or are you checking out car six? Are you checking out, you know, I think I talked to Commissioner Christopher. It's important sometimes that one and all wheel drive depending on where they're going, so probably more information. And then if we find they're all using one or two cars, then we can figure out how to, how to do that as well.
We need to have individual numbers for each car, and I think we need to start at fifty-four, so we can say car fifty-four.
Where are you?
Where are you? No, honestly, though, a three-digit number.
Anybody didn't laugh is, doesn't know what car fifty-four is.
Yeah.
I'm young, but I'm not that young.
So.
Yeah, I think a numbers would be good, but the, the actual vehicle identification, so people when they check it out know whether it's an SUV or a
Yes, yes.
Oh, you're the Supra. And they need a gallon of Crisco and a shoehorn to be able to get in it. Sorry, my filter.
I've also had a discussion with Commissioner Christopher, and ultimately it's up to the full commissioners as we were discussing whether the vehicles are marked with Clickdak County signs on the doors. Sometimes cars are driven differently when they're clearly marked. But I'd be up to you guys, whether there be magnetic signs on the doors or, you know, how you want them marked. So.
I personally would put a sticker on the door.
Yeah.
But I'm open however the board wants to do it.
I would go with the vinyl and underneath the vinyl just have a little number on it. I mean, if most of the cars are different and you check out the Suburban, you know what the Suburban looks like. Not too worried about it. Especially if they're all in the same spot.
And we're talking about a county logo on the door?
Yeah, I already said yes to that.
Got it, got it, you had two different things there, got it.
So I think they'll be, Lee and I are talking about, probably have one meeting between now and the first of the year where Lee and Jen and I and and IT and Commissioner Christopher, since he was kind of the lead on the fleet software, will get together and make sure all the pieces are in place for January one to have the fleet ready to go. And then IT will actually install the software in any vehicle that is utilizing it. So they send us the parts and IT actually.
It's, you plug in a dongle.
And so they'll be working with the sheriff's department, other departments to get that stuff installed, January first. So I think we're, we're, I think the one car I haven't talked to is, is building codes their vehicles. And whether, if they do it, it should be built, could be built a non-departmental or not. So we have some cars that are paid out of non-departmental, some that are be paying out of their own departments, but paid for ultimately by the commissioner, so we're trying to figure out the best way to do that moving forward. I think we have seven, Jen, did we put seven cars in non-departmental, seven software expenses? In the fleet, we put the fleet tires and all that stuff in non-departmental too, so.
No, I'm just thinking, and I'm sure we, I'm sure we have or we will as we figure this out. But we've removed the expense from the departments out of their budget, so we didn't like take the expense and leave the the revenue to cover it in people's budget. I'm sure we, I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm sure. But when we were starting to talk about tires and oil changes.
Other than.
Make sure we.
Fuel is the only thing.
Fuel is the only thing we left.
Right. Then we need to come up with whatever policy we're going to do, that you return the vehicle full or what have you and, yeah.
Sorry, I got to throw in.
I did not mention that it's not high line, what is it for vehicles, but I did go out of the VRNR.
Right. Vehicle expense.
So, then it'll be something that we look at in the next budget.
Right.
Okay, how much, as, as well as communication, because there should be leftover there too.
Right. Lee?
What about the rental rates that were being paid? These are going to be replaced, I'm just always going to put in surplus vehicles?
That's a good question.
Do you there do like a rental rate?
Currently it's a rental rate.
Is there anything to do with?
I did, currently I just transferred the rental rate, but that is a topic for discussion.
So I mean, you know, rental rate. What about charging the department's rental rate for using like the, the road stuffs that can help pay for?
I was going to say, that seems very time-consuming to charge one department to twelve dollars for using the vehicle for the day and you got to do all that billing and accounting and I'm not.
Yeah, and just, right, and it's, it's basically you're charging them that they're going to pay you with the money that you gave them. It's different than public works where it does get charged against different funds.
To be able to track it that way, I just think it'd be a lot of work for somebody to have.
That's why I just want to make sure we pulled the, because again, they would be paying the rental rate with the money that we put in their budget. And if we didn't, they don't have the expense anymore, we shouldn't, that money should be going in to, to pay the rental rate in non-departmental.
But that's, that's just the purchasing of the vehicle, that's not the maintenance, so fuel is.
Right, it's still in their budgets, right.
Maintenance or one half of maintenance. So there's still two thirds that, that we will in essence be taking on.
I, I think at least some of the cars in the fleet, and ultimately we'll find out using the software how big the fleet should be. Maybe five's too many, maybe five's not enough. I know Sharon's already using one of the cars full-time that will go back and that will go in the fleet January one, but if she's basically using it full-time now, it'd probably be nice to plan on a couple of those vehicles being new occasionally and the fleet not always being the
Leftovers.
The leftovers, because if we're relying on them to travel.
I, I would say we need to continue to put in for a VRNR, but the VRNR schedule should be fairly cheap because for the most part, these are vehicles that we pulled out of departments because of lack of use. So I can't imagine they're going to need replaced every three years or four years or something like that, so even then a VRNR age shouldn't be too horrible.
Right.
Well, even if just a couple of the five, two of the five are slated to be replaced with new at some point, I mean, just.
You need to have something in there, yeah.
We'll learn that as we go.
Until, yep, until we figure out what we're doing, I would just VRNR.
Ready a couple of the things?
Yeah, a couple of the things. So we've already talked about the fleet software. We're, we're drawn down, we're going to have completed the RSA to do a migration by the end of the year. That's, we're already, we're already set for that. Twenty-twenty-three is, and what, I'm looking ahead, it looks like we've got about thirty PCs to replace in twenty-twenty-three, give or take. And I've been touching base with the department heads. I've broken it down into, in, into three, you know, ten, three purchases. One purchase is going to be in January, one will probably be March or April, and the other one will be midsummer. And, and that's based on the age of the machines, we're, go ahead.
PCs, are, are you talking desktop units, not laptops? Just either one, desktop or laptop?
Right, right. Computers. Yeah, yeah, I'm just talking computers. And I'm also talking to each of the department heads prior to any purchases to see, and the questions that I'm asking is, is is there a benefit to using, for a laptop as opposed to a desktop? Do you have a spare desk or a spare laptop in your department? Because we want to pull those out. And, and if they do have a spare laptop, then, then the answer is yes, we should give them desktops. Or excuse me, we should give them laptops throughout, through, throughout their department. And we are, let me see. Yeah, so we're, so, so we're talking to each of the department heads, you know, what they prefer, desktop or laptop and.
And elected officials?
And elected officials, yeah. What their, what their preference is, like, for example, there's one in the sheriff's office that is a, a department machine that sits off in the corner. I think it's in White Salmon, that, that deputies might come in and log in and, and maybe. And, and that just sits there, so that, that would be, would be better off to be just a, a desktop machine. But most of them, most of the people have a, have a need for a laptop.
Does that machine actually get used?
The one in the sheriff's office, apparently, according to, because I, I talked to Carmen, I think it was last week, and she said, yeah, she said that machine. They come in, I don't know what they do with it, but, but yeah, they, according to.
And does it need to be replaced is the next question.
Well, it's, it's of the age, it's of the age of, of being replaced, yes. From that perspective. So the only other question there is, is your first question, which is, does it get used? And I can only assume because I'm not, but I would assume that yes, it is being used. I think they've got the same thing, they've got one down in White Salmon and they've got one here in, in, in Goldendale in the sheriff's office here in Goldendale. And I know those, I know the one in Goldendale is being used. And, and I, I'm, I'm thinking the one in White Salmon has the same purpose and, and it's being used as well.
There are, there are departments and offices that have legitimate needs for a desktop. Either they're tied to a state system or it does something that, that laptops don't do anymore, you know, they have less USBs and USBCs, so, and some, so there is a legitimate need to still maintain desktops, but the majority should not be. We feel we've got your blessing to push that throughout the county, but we still work on a department-to-department basis and, and show them that it's, that the advantages our department are working with now that has an old laptop they use for presentations and all the employees have desktops. They weren't aware of docking stations, they weren't aware that, you know, when it's at your desk, you really can't tell the difference yet if you're going to go do a presentation or you got meetings or you're traveling throughout the county, the laptop is much more. Plus with COVID and the potential for disaster, having more laptops, we learned the hard way. Having mobility is, is, is important and critical, so that's the ultimate goal.
How many did you find that had desktop and laptop?
The one department that I'm thinking of, that, that I, I touched base with, they had, there was, and, and this is the first ten. Of the first ten, there was one department that had a spare laptop that they all kind of share. And then each of them, there was, there was two, three desktops, I think, and then the one spare that they share in.
What's the cost difference between somebody, replacing somebody's desktop and giving them a laptop? I mean, I'm assuming the, you know, if the laptop lasts five years, the desktop lasts five years, that's going to be the same. So what's the cost for doing a desktop versus the cost for doing a laptop with a docking station and a keyboard and, you know?
You know, I honestly, I, I can't give you that number.
Laptops are a little more expensive.
Yeah, laptops will be more expensive, partly because of the docking station. And we've already talked, as far as monitors, I'm not buying new monitors for all the machines. I'll probably start out by buying ten monitors and I'll, and I'll place them where they need to be. And when I run out, I'll kind of estimate how many more monitors that I need and buy a few more. So we're going to save some money on the monitors.
What about resale value at auction? Do you actually get resale value out of laptops or?
No, well, the deal is, is, is to, to comply with security protocols, we have to remove the hard drives. So once we remove the hard drives, the, the machine is pretty much worthless.
Right, but I guess my question would be, would it be of benefit to the county to slap a new hard drive in it and then sell it? Probably not, because then you got to buy Windows and everything else to forget that whole thought.
Yeah, okay.
So I think when we started.
The asset that depreciates all the way down.
Yeah, and, and personally, I wouldn't go buy a five-year-old machine. I just, I just wouldn't do it, it's, you know.
Well, we've talked about through the last couple of budgets is every machine we have, desktop or laptop, even laptops sitting in a corner that a department doesn't use, we have to pay for the licenses.
Right.
You know, and that, it's expensive just having them set there, and then IT has to manually update these machines on a regular basis. And then IT has to manually update these machines on a regular basis, maybe so often. So they're a little labor intensive and there's a cost to having them just sit there. So if we can have less machines that are provide more functionality and flexibility and less licenses, then I think it's it's a it's a win-win.
And it's a workload issue, too. If if a laptop sits sits in a drawer for a month, it's not getting the updates. And so somebody, somebody pulls it out and start and tries to start using it, it's it's not up to date and maybe it works. So then that generates a call to IT. And now we're and now we're dealing with with something that is used two or three times a year. And every time it gets used, or four, five, or six, or however many, but every time it gets used, then it generates a call for us. Whereas if it's the same machine, they use it every day, they just pull it off their docking station and take it to wherever they need to be.
Plus, we tend to look at these as a risk as well, you know, it's more machine sitting around that they're not up to date increases the security issue. And we we heard yesterday about one county that paid a significant amount of money to buy back their access, they were locked out of all their computers for four days. They had to buy Bitcoin to.
Ransomware.
Ransomware and, you know, and.
This is the one that happened?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just, you know, it's just, so we tend to think everything's a risk, everything's a, everything's a hole in the dam, so to speak. And we try and maintain as much protection as we can. So less is better.
Which you brought up risk, which brings me to my next subject, the cybersecurity audit. Yeah, I, well, my intention is there with the cybersecurity audit is to use it as a baseline. You know, this is where we are right now, and I'm sure they're going to give us room for improvement. There's also the the network infrastructure was was very well built and designed, but it's it's aging. And there's been, you know, just like, just like anything, you know, there's, there's changes and things like that that have been made. And at some point, you kind of need to refresh it, you know, which was would be with a redesign. 2023 is what I'm looking at to to basically put a plan together for a redesign for for 2024. And then we then along about budget time in 23, we would make plans to to implement that redesign in 24.
And it could be multiple year.
It it could be, it could be, I don't I don't have the plan right now, so I can't tell you what it's going to be.
We were scheduled to buy on 2023, five new servers to replace the servers around a five or six-year rotation. We kicked that down the road a year because, one, we're not having a lot of troubles with the server, so we think we can get another year out of it. Plus, if we do the security audit, if we start at the beginning, do a security audit, there may be implications for the servers or how they're configured, or whether we go totally to the cloud or not. Firewalls, all of that, you know, we spent $125,000 this year, backup servers, so they're very expensive. These other ones are $150,000 for five. So these are significant investments and and makes sense to do the study and start there and maybe let that inform any configurations, network or hardware that we have to buy and then lay out a plan to. It's more evolution than revolution, we don't think we have to throw everything out and start completely over. But when you make significant investments like that, it's better to see where you're at and have a plan. It's been a number of years since we did a security audit anyway, so.
Five or six years since the last security audit was done. And so, yeah, so that that this is something that should be done every so many years. I know the, and of course, I'm going from information that's told to me. But I think that the the initial network design is well over 10 years old. It could be as much as 15 years old. And like I said, a lot of things change over that period of time and and doing a refresh or redesign, I think we're we're due.
And just to remind the commissioners, we you did leave some funds in the budget to cover that. Randy's working with Jeff, Jeff was going to do a similar one for his system and he has money, Jeff King, and he has money for that. And the new insurance carrier has a pool of money available and they're interested because there's three or four other counties doing the same thing. They may potentially pay for part of this audit as well, because we have cyber insurance now. And so it's to their benefit to make sure that our system's up par.
I seem to recall the state or the Fed had a free program that they would send their people out to do your.
CISA, and they do, they do a vulnerability audit, and I think it's mostly remote. And they look for for vulnerabilities, that's that's. And and I do plan to use that and use them, I think that is a is a good place to start. But we still need the CISA, I can't think of what CISA stands for.
You can add them up.
Yeah. It's CISA. But but I think to get a full comprehensive audit, I think we're going to have to go beyond the free stuff. I think the free stuff is a good place to start, and we will.
And I think the last thing you, Randy, you want to talk about, and I think that all leads into the staffing and the training issue as well.
Staff cross-training and 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 developing, developing the staff. And and because at the end of the day, you know, I love Goldendale, I think Goldendale's a great place, but not everybody does. So it's sometimes it's kind of hard to 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 draw draw the right kind of candidates in for, you know, to to work, especially in IT and and areas like that. So 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 what I'm doing is I'm I'm developing, and we've already got very intelligent, very good technicians that that we can further develop and and broaden the horizons with 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 the systems that we have here in Clicktack County. And but that's going to take a process to bring these people all up to speed. Because let's face it, in 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 2022, our IT staff got cut in half. And so, you know, me being one of the new people, we're all coming up to speed. And and with such a small staff that we have, it's it's vitally important that everybody has has a has a clue of what everyone else is doing. You know, it's, I mean, we we just can't afford not to do that. So what my intention is, is to start bringing people up to speed and and manage it more on a project basis and say, okay, and and assign a project to a person. And then once a week, we'll have a project update meeting and an internal staff project update meeting. And we'll, you know, we'll we'll share information and share, you know, share where everybody's at, and and if there's a problem somewhere, we can, we can discuss it and and bring everyone up to speed. We're small enough to be able to do that. As a matter of fact, we're small enough that we have to do that. Because I I I don't want to see the type of situation where, well, you know, we're siloed. And this, you know, that was, that was so-and-so's job, and he's no longer here, so that information went with him. You know, we 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 just can't afford to do that. But with that, you know, people move on, people, people for a thousand different reasons decide to to take employment elsewhere. And and when they do that, what my intention is, is to hire hire people, you know, recruit from maybe the the trade schools in the area or the community colleges or the universities, wherever we can find them. But recruit people and bring them in and start and start bringing them up, start them at the help desk. And then after a year or two, bring them into system administration and give them a path that they can that they can move forward with. Like I said, we've got really good people now, very intelligent, that 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 we can that we can do this with.
You know, I've said this a lot and I'll continue to say it, we've learned the hard way. No one person should have the keys to the kingdom in any specific area. It just sets us back when we have to completely rebuild something or or start over. And, you know, shame on us if we continue to do that. So we're not doing it in the areas that I work with. And so we just can't afford to do it.
I I would say I agree with what you got going there. I also think it works good for recruitment if you're hiring an entry-level help desk type person, but they also know that they're not going to be stuck at help desk for the next 27 years. So when you actually have a policy in place, it's like, look, this is what we want to do. It's almost like a union apprenticeship program.
Yes.
That, you know, hey, look, I, there's light at the end of the tunnel. And I think you're going to get more job hires that way. And I hope the rest of our departments follow suit and doing the same thing.
Yeah, and and that's exactly what I'm patterning it after is is a an apprenticeship type situation. I know, because I spent 12 years in wind, and and that's exactly how wind is. They're a little bit more formal in that they have, they have certain, certain.
Dates and times.
Skills and things that they need to check off. But we can follow, you know, the the experience, the more experienced people teach, the less experienced people and and just like an apprenticeship.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Did you have anything you wanted to? Casey's been very deep in open enrollment and benefit changes and year-end stuff. So so that's been keeping her busy amongst the normal stuff that that we do in HR. Jen, did you decide if you had some stuff you wanted to talk to the commissioners about? For those of you who have not met her, this is Jen, she does a lot with the budget.
He's feisty today.
We're just going to name a chair after her, this is the Budget Chair.
Okay, well, it's been a long road, and today we intend to wrap up the 2023 budget. So maybe we can put a pretty little bow on that and move on with life. Although I felt this year's budget process went a lot better than last year's, I think there's still room for improvement. Considering we added entirely new fund and department in record time goes to show how well the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, system administration, and the finance team is working cohesively together. We've built a solid working relationship that I can say was was not always the case in years past. And having this relationship with these groups makes my job a million times easier, and I couldn't be more grateful to have them. So my intention is, over the course of the first three months of 2023, I'd like to schedule a workshop to address a list of items that I have under policies and procedures. We have a few items that really need to be ironed out to operate smoothly, fleet being one of them, we talked a little bit about that today. Supplementals and guidance for directors and electeds and supplementals and transfers. Grant application expectations, getting a process memorialized for that. Budget workshops, I I'm not really happy with how budget workshops currently operate. I'd like to maybe make some tweaks and changes there so we can try and instead of just spend entire days just listening to basically a presentation, get a little bit more nitty-gritty with it. And budgets that have no director oversight, we do have a couple of them right now that I think we need to discuss. Additionally, we need to have discussion regarding strategic planning for the next 2024 budget. And once we get all of these items ironed out, it's my intent to memorialize that. Possibly handbook, some sort of resource document to be shared with directors and electeds going forward. In the efforts of transparency, I continue to make adjustments. I, last year, I made adjustments with the webpage specifically. I created one, there wasn't one specific for a budget or a fiscal, so we have that now. I've made adjustments to that webpage this year to be even more transparent on upcoming events and whatnot. Just as Rob was talking about earlier, one, not having one person hold the keys to the kingdom, I have started to itemize out my my job duties in a Gantt chart over this last quarter, because this is when really where all of the statutory deadlines are. And it takes a step by step. Smart Sheets is wonderful because I can add notes and comments to each one of, you know, where I have direction for potentially anybody, if something should happen to me, you can come in and do that. And then attachments as to what I submitted to Lee or signed documentation from the board. And I've already started the 2024 year. But it kind of goes through, shows where everything is in, if it's complete and processed, whatnot. And like I said, pretty straightforward, you can click on the attachment, see all the attachments there and open it up. So anybody should be able to step into my position and it'd be.
Don't say anybody.
Streamlined.
No, not this anybody.
But again, I think it's part of what we're trying to do is document things, put things in writing, put them someplace everybody has access to. Not in my file, on my drive, somewhere when I'm gone, nobody knows where it's at, which we continue to suffer from in the past. And so I think this is all truly transparency.
So and to the website, you know, I have my own department page here. This is where I started to, when we really started getting into supplementals, I created this upcoming event section with public hearings. And you can click on these links here, it'll take you to the page where the document is housed. So go to the 2022 budget, similarly, down at the, you know, we have all the budget information and the documents related to the hearing reports, public hearings, and the supplementals. And for the 2023 budget, I already have, you know, past hearing information, today's hearing information. And I've created a budget summary dashboard page so that the smart sheets dashboards are integrated into the webpage. So we have the revenue, which is, this is the budget summary by program area. I believe I sent the board earlier this month. So but it's interactive, anybody who signs up for Smart Sheets, which they can do to view things for for free, can get on here and, you know, be just as interactive as you were on your computer. So all that information is is out there and has been out there to the public.
I don't know how much the public actually uses that as, as a citizen before I sat here, I would have used it. So I very much appreciate that it's there and it's accessible to the public for any of them that care to look. And that I just want to say thank you for doing all that you do. Definitely makes our job easier.
No, you're welcome, and and that's why I screen shared as well as this morning, so I can walk through through it with the public a little bit. Beyond that, there are a couple of irons in the fire. The National Opioid Settlement and the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. I've set up my account for the opioid settlement for the county, as well as added Rob and Greg Gallagher to to the account for contacts and account holders, again, so that I'm not the only person that has the information. It is a revenue coming in, so I thought it, we thought it was appropriate that Greg.
Again, not only having one or two people that have access to that information and portal, so.
I I'll be submitting for both of these funding resources the last week of December so that it ensures that we receive the funds in 2023. Don't want to really get it too early and it get mixed up into fund balance, it's just messy that way. Additionally, the opioid settlement is on the Finance Committee agenda for the next meeting so that we can discuss accounting details to that. I'm also on your workshop schedule for this week. In that workshop, the topic of discussion will be our current quarter-to-date 2022 budget numbers and budget to actuals. See where we are. And next week on your consent agenda, you'll have a handful of transfer requests from various departments who needed to do a little tweaking to their 2022 budgets to ensure that their budgets were whole in both areas of salary and benefits and then the bottom line.
So I'm not going to word this correctly, so don't don't hold me to it. Then you can kick me if I, one thing I've, we've observed, I've observed is, you know, when Jen started out, it was pretty initially was creating the process, right? Recreating the process, changing the process, updating the process. Once the budget was set, you know, we we tend to stay out of elected and. Once the budget was set, you know, we we tend to stay out of elected and directors budgets. I mean, it's that point that, you know, they're responsible for management and they all do, they all work very hard to do that. They're all busy. They're all have other things going on. So what I've seen uh, kind of transition now is a more of a reliance on Jen from the directors and the electeds to help them, have her help them monitor there. So she now is, you know, and it's a trust thing, and I think she's built, uh, done that. And it's a good thing. I think we don't want it to go too far to where they're not doing it because they're thinking she's doing it and nobody's doing that today. I just don't want that to get there. But I think we had some surprises. They had some surprises this year and we're trying to eliminate those and and they would like to as well. So I know like recently Jen, when when she got the last the November, the budget, uh, she went through and reviewed everybody's and got ahold of someone and said, hey, are you aware of this? And, you know, this is pretty close and and working with them to do that, whereas they may have uh, got busy and not not looked that last look because theoretically we've done the last supplemental. And we tend to try not to do emergency supplementals um, at the end of the year. So I think uh, there's to her credit more of a a trust that she's helping them manage and monitor some of these um, some of these funds and some of these budgets. And I think that's a good thing. We need to eliminate as many surprises as we can.
I'd just like to add that that can't be solely the only avenue because I am the absolute last to know anything. So if it's, if I'm seeing it, it's or like, it's already too late. And December 8th is basically the la- it's that's when the payroll is processed, so we have the full month of November. And I, you know, that it's a crunch time and it happened last year too, but that's the only the only day that I could see exactly where things are gonna go and give myself approximately four hours to get things put together and notice to the paper should an emergency supplemental be needed. That it like, it is literally a day window. Um, and everybody was great. I sent out an urgent message, you know, it's available. The Auditor's Office was great in adjusting things that they do so they can get a report ran. And again, it goes back to the team effort that and the relationships that we've
And I think that's what she's talking about, what she talks about. And as we, as we ultimately, you create positions that report to you and there's not a director per uh, or someone looking over their budgets. Then sometimes they're not being checked on a regular basis. And so we have to figure out how to help, help folks who have those responsibilities manage those and and look at those. And it and it's not done maliciously or at the not doing their job. They're just thinking the 10,000 things. And there's no one else saying, hey, if you looked at the, if you looked at the budget, the, you know, the month of reports out, how you doing to remind them? And they may lose sense if they're not on site all the time. They may lose sense of the calendar. I mean, we literally had less than a day to figure out how to solve something or do a supplemental that would have been basically the last couple of days of the year. We didn't have to do that, but so we're working to eliminate those and how to help manage those, whatever that looks like, so.
I'm 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 glad. I mean, I'm good with that and I and I do definitely have a sense that the team is working much better because it really is a team. It's just gonna be finding that balance between being, you know, because the, you know, any elected or directors, the management and monitoring of their budget is primarily their job. And as you said, if it if it arises where you're noticing it, that's that's like the last chance. It's it's something got missed or somebody was not paying attention. And again, to to Rob's point, that's not to say they're not doing, there's, that's only one little piece of their their job that they're doing. And so it is great that they have, that the team has such a good relationship that you can just point out, hey, did you, did you notice? And probably sometimes they're like, yeah, I did. I've got this. I'm, I know I'm gonna have to deal with this. But sometimes it's the, no, I I had not saw those and thank you. So I think it's just important that uh, you know, you, especially for you, you keep the right balance uh, that works for you as well. Where it's not just, oh, Jen's watching everything. I don't have to pay attention. No worries with that.
No, no.
Okay.
We won't go there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. No, that is all I have.
Any questions? I don't have a question, but I did have maybe a comment, which I appreciate that in one of the items that you raised, you know, for future is about the grant application, you know, more maybe we need to formalize when folks. I think we, I was under the impression we have kind of a, but I think it's more anecdotal or just that we have kind of a tradition of that, of course, if you're applying for a grant or something, you would come in and have a discussion with the board about it because ultimately it's gonna be, you know, the board is gonna be the ones that either accept or don't and what's the grant match and and we're okay with that. The board should always be in that discussion from the beginning, not after the fact. And I, and generally that's been the issue. I know we have had a couple of surprises where the board was unaware that somebody was
May not even be a grant. It could be congressional spending.
It could be. Yeah, really true. It couldn't even be, yeah, it could be.
Part of this is, as far as I'm concerned, is grant or appropriation.
Or appropriation.
If any ask.
Any ask.
Can clear the house first.
Well, we And I would agree with that. I, you know, I had, I was under the same impression, um, but I can't find a document that memorializes that. So I think it's just good practice to
We, there's a couple of things we need to add to the, and I think Glenn did for a good reason. When he put budget policy or direction in the resolution, it reminds everybody that, you know, there are strings attached that the you as the commissioners have set, policy or direction tied to the budget. I think we need to add fleet. We need to add some stuff in there about the fleet. And I've worked, talked to Lee about helping put together fleet policies, you know, what's the expectation? I think, you know, we've had a discussion and it's on our list uh, to create a grant committee. So I mean, if you back the train up departments and offices potentially should, maybe not in every case, like I know there's some that are appropriations from the state on a regular basis that are tied to, that are um, statutory. But, you know, some of these, the, there should be a policy or a directive that they start at a certain place because we've talked in the past about grants, if they have people, sometimes what are the, what are the stipulations with the folks and the grant and you know, this positioning, when the grant runs out, is there unemployment tied to that? I mean, there's a lot of pieces to grants that that sometimes people aren't aware of. Having a team look at that and say, have you thought about this, thought about that? Gives you more background and and when it gets to you, it's been looked at by folks from different disciplines in the organization. Not to be the gatekeeper, would not be the role to tell the department or elected, you can't do that. It's just to get you the information. And then it documents it and puts it on the public record. And then ultimately maybe should all go to on a consent agenda, my consent agenda item to where there's a paper trail for any appropriation or grant that it's been through some level of review, even if it's only just the commissioners, because ultimately these are all on your behalf. County's behalf.
Right. And I, and I do think it's, it is a good idea to have some analysis of what are the impacts of this outside of your department? Because a lot of times, some of these, there are duties or
Reporting.
Yeah, reporting things that are beyond. And again, it's not that it's a bad thing. It's just that everybody understands. Because a lot of times, even now, when it, the way it works is that someone will come in. Like I want to do this. Here's what it is. You know, the board has no background information. It's okay. Seems like a good idea. It seems like a good thing. It's, oh, yeah, it's free money. It's whatever. And the the proponent of it too, not not maliciously, they're unaware that, oh, you realize that there's a reporting requirement or there's this other thing that could have an impact on fiscal staff, could on the Auditor's Office, or we don't know.
Might, might cost us a whole nother week's worth of work with our contractors or the
Exactly. And so and so that's, again, it's just so that it's transparent and that everybody has all the information so that we all make good
And it's not like I tend to irritate any of my fellow directors or elected officials, but
That train's left the station.
My last update of the year almost made it. Dang it. Is I don't see it much anymore, but my first couple of years here, it was pretty common to have someone come in and say, I need this approved by next Tuesday. The grant, you know, I need to submit it by
Deadline.
A deadline. And that kind of puts you in a corner and it we need to back the train up so that there's time to get you thoughtful information. The exception is sometimes they're released late and there's a short window.
Which happens.
Which does happen.
But that should be the exception, not the rule that um, so if there's a process and people follow it, then should ultimately be better.
Right. So, but my point was, I'm glad that's on the, you know, the docket for the, because it's just better if things are put down in writing, then there's not a you know, again, I think 99% of the time, everybody is kind of doing that now. It's just for those exceptions and it's not, but there's not really anything written down as to what, what is the process that you do this.
Not, not really for much of anything that we do at the county, really. I mean, it's very difficult to start a new position within the county. Because it's usually that one person did the job and, you know, that one person held the knowledge. And so I mean, it it's my goal to get at least the finance stuff and related to finance um, memorialized in a, in a resource document.
There's nothing free in this world. Grants have mandates and requirements.
Always do.
Okay, thank you, Jen. And one more report to go now that I found out I've irritated everybody.
Sorry, I was I was jokey.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Solid Waste Department. So uh, I've worked with Michelle. She's been very helpful. Michelle used to be our recycling coordinator now is oversees our grants on behalf of the state and she's been very helpful. We I've agreed to verbally agreed to modify our grants, both the SWIFA grant, the LSWIFA grant, which covers the recycling and then the, what they call the RED grant, which is a competitive grant to acknowledge that for a three, four month period, we haven't done much in terms of these grants and the very least staff time because we haven't had any. So to make those funds available for other counties just this year and we can be penalized, they call it negative points, when you apply for a competitive grant in the future or even our allocation of the SWIFA grant, if we've left a lot of money on the table, then we risk that being reallocated for a biennium to other counties because there's always at any given time, county saying, we need more money. So I just thought it was the right thing to do. So it'll come back to you for for approval should you decide to do that. But I thought she did a very thoughtful analysis for us so that we could keep money for the position for the remainder of this biennium, which ends June 30th, and put us in a good spot for continued funding after that. So you'll be seeing that ecology's looking at those and then I'll bring them to you for approval should you be inclined to approve that. But I do appreciate her help. The chair is is dedicated. He wants to interview with me. We have a couple of good applicants, I think, for the engagement, community engagement position and hopefully we can get that filled and and get that function back on, back on track. And so we're working on that. I'll be reaching out to the board chair shortly.
How is that um, gonna work? Is that gonna be like we've done with other positions that all of the board will interview with a person eventually?
I talked to the board chair about that in this case, um, because it still reports to to me as a director on an interim basis. I ask if a commissioner, asked the chair if, if a commissioner wanted to be involved in in the interviews and he he volunteered to to participate in that. Once this position is filled, I believe it's gonna report to the commissioners at some point. Or someone else at some point. And but for those who report to you historically, like the codes enforcement and the directors, you're all involved in the, in the hiring process. For these other hybrids that are either interim or otherwise, I typically go to the chair at the time and ask how you want that process to look. So I guess in this case, I mean, we can, if you all want to interview for this position or be involved or more than one, I'll feed that up to the chair and to the commissioners, but um, that's how I set it up initially.
How do you feel?
Yeah, I, if they're eventually gonna be their own director, I would like to have some say in it, I guess.
Well, we, just to to remind you what, the last input I got on this position was ultimately a little report to directly to the commissioners. There has been some discussion about maybe reporting somewhere else under another director, under a director. But um, I don't have clear
That's kind of where I'm at. If this is gonna be your employee that down the road, you're making the employment decisions for. I'm fine with not being involved, but if this is somebody that down the road, I'm going to have to make employment decisions about them. I want to make sure I have a say in the hiring decision as well.
I would concur. I mean, I think that's their, kind of depends on the the chain of command as far as who they are.
I agree, which is why I reached out to the chair to see what the process was and we, pending this discussion about whether it be one or all or two of the three or however you wanted to do that. So it's, haven't set those yet, so it's, we're completely open to how I'm
When are you hoping to do the interviews?
Soon as possible. I think there's a couple that are worthy of 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 the interview at this point and whenever we can get schedules aligned. So sooner than later, hopefully. And I know all the days are coming up and
Are the couple of um, good prospect ones, are they local or outside the area?
Yep. Internal and external, so. What I'll do is uh, I'll send those to you and we can look and you can
And if I'm not available that day, he's more than welcome to set in for me. And you're gonna be gone.
You can send them.
Okay, yeah, I'll look at it.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you. And then one, one last thing, and I talked to Director Quinn about this today. Ecology is hoping or is going to bring it up again. In the past, we have been offered a $60,000 enforcement compliance type grant. And for various reasons, um, we haven't, we haven't accepted that grant. Some examples of how the grant could be used are for illegal dump sites, derelict vehicles, as well as environmental issues. They said, hey, it might be good, you know, you could maybe offset some of the cost of the landfill compliance officer. So um, and I, and I'm thinking in terms of code compliance. And I said, well, could code compliance use it? And they said, sure, it's 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 a kind of a broad category of of compliance and enforcement. So what I've asked him is that will come up when we look at the next biennium. So in the spring, I ask them to send all that information to the county and of course I'll give to the commissioners and then I'll have Director Quinn look at it from, from the aspect of um, enforcement or compliance and environmental health. And then, but it sounds like the money could be used for some of the things that George is trying to find cleanup money for, so. But I don't know what the strings are to this money. It may be why we've said no.
That's the big question to me. Is this on uh, can be used on private property or only on public right of way property?
I told her we're open, I'm open to looking at the grant and and having others look at it. It's not an automatic no. In the past, we've just said no. And so she said, well, I hope you consider it. And I said, we'll send his information and and I'll give it to the commissioners and codes enforcement and and landfill compliance and environmental health and if there's if it's money we can utilize, then maybe
And later as well if they're doing
So just letting you know early on that that there may be other funds available. So and with that, I just want to conclude by saying, uh, you know, we've had some staff changes in our departments this year. Joe and Jeff left IT and went on to to um, productive jobs. I get to interact with Jeff still in another role I'm at and Joe went back to the company we stole him from and he's doing very well there. Sandy's moved to another department and and enjoying that job and doing well. And so we've gained Elizabeth and Randy and Jordan and they're doing exceptional. So I think we've, we um, some good people made some career changes and we got some good people to replace them. And I think that I'm thankful. I'm I'm glad for those who've doing things that they want to do and and happy that we were able to bring on some people that are doing an exceptional job. I have the distinct pleasure to work and I want to thank you for that with Casey and Elizabeth and Jen, Randy, Shelby, Curtis and Jordan. It's a privilege to come to work every day to work with them. And I want to thank you, the commissioners, for your support that you give all of us in our daily, in our daily work and Commissioner Sauter on behalf of all of my team, we wish you the best.
Thank you. You were starting to scare me. It sounded like it was a You were starting to scare me, it sounded like it was a, it wasn't my wrap up, it was yours. Where are you going with this?
Sounds like maybe I need to practice that. I've irritated everybody, I need.
It's close to the holidays, it's going to take a job as Santa for a while.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, okay. Anyway, I, I, it's a, it's a distinct pleasure to work with the folks I have the privilege of working with. In addition to Lee and Alisa and others, that we all work well together as a team and, and I'm truly blessed and thank you.
Well, thank you, sir.
And then I do need to go into executive session. If you're so inclined. Yes.
Okay, how long?
15 minutes to start, please.
All right. Okay, we are going to enter into executive session in accordance with RCW 423140-4 for collective bargaining. Issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session for everybody online. After we come out, we are going to go to lunch, so we will see everyone at 1 o'clock.